We have a motion and a second. Uh, it's a discussion. All those in favor say aye. Uh, those opposed. Our next item is the confirmation and approval of the claims.
Our claims is, uh, my, uh, four hundred thirty-eight thousand, six hundred ninety-eight, eighty-two. Uh, is the total amount, um, regarding, uh, our Fund One. Uh, out of that amount, uh, we spent, uh, two hundred sixty-six thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars and forty-four cents of funding money. Uh, you can compare that to, uh, the last, uh, year ago, uh, when we spent three hundred and eight thousand, two hundred and four sixty-six for a difference of around forty-one thousand dollars less paid this year. And really, the difference that's made up here would be, uh, the expense of the elementary doors, the last work we did in the lobby, uh, was approximately that amount. So that, that pretty much, uh, makes up the difference there. For our Fund Four Hundred debt service, uh, it was a total of forty thousand, four hundred and forty through twenty-eight. Uh, we issued, uh, that payment for interest in, in the bond series. Everything is, uh, pretty ordinary, uh, for this month. Any questions on any of the claims we go ahead to address and individual amounts if you want to.
We have a motion, just a second. I'm going to go ahead and ask you a second. Are we ready? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed. Okay, and this item is the financial report.
Let's talk to him to come forward and kind of present the financial report.
A few things before I do, um, uh, your cover sheet you see, uh, it's out there, uh, it's still well in black, uh, which is remarkable, you know, they need that new building, uh, it's been quite a done to get, uh, ready to go. And they've, uh, done that and they're, uh, still in good shape, uh, so I'm going to point that out to you. There are two other things that are coming up, uh, that I want to make you aware of. Um, I mentioned this to you before, but it's becoming a little, more clear as we go on. Uh, we have applied for, uh, some money to put life value in. Uh, that will cost probably about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. We hope to get that money this year, if not this year, then next year, if that's this year. And we'll have to, uh, put in twenty percent of that, uh, to make that happen. And then they, uh, and that's sort of still evolving, but I think, uh, we'll, uh, April, we'll have some real different numbers for that. And then the next picture that we're looking at, uh, this would be the third year, we had a three-year rollout of textbooks. This would be the third year, uh, of, of, of force of that total, uh, in reading and math. And we'll have that, uh, lined up, the whole, uh, table also. So those are two of the experiences that, uh, we nail some of the history and English names too. That's the financial.
Next is our superintendent report.
Superintendent report today, we are very excited to tell you about a program that we're going to be starting here, uh, at, at Clarktown High School. We already have, uh, an outstanding advanced placement program, uh, there, probably, uh, uh, one of the better. Uh, it had a lot to do with, with this, uh, over the past, uh, years of, of providing staff, uh, uh, for a smaller high school. Uh, we're, we're very fortunate to be able to offer as many AP offers as we could and have as many students. You might recall last, uh, uh, spring, last, uh, summer, we were, we were, uh, sharing with you the number of students that we had AP, AP test and numbers that passed it. We had increased those numbers, uh, uh, very much. And, uh, uh, this program, we already feel like we're at a pretty good level. Uh, what we're going to see today, Miss Black is going to share with us, is we're going to take this already solid, outstanding program to another new level, uh, that, that even is going to be better. And we're, we're very, very excited about this. Does Black want to tell us about Advanced Placement?
Well, this is going to take us to another level. And I, first of all, I just want to thank you all for, uh, the board for supporting an Advanced Placement program. We have a very successful AP program and we've already gone after, uh, underrepresented, uh, students. This program, Advanced Kentucky, will help us together even more. So we will have more students involved in our Advanced Placement program as well as prepared to feeder programs in the middle school. And this is something that we've never attempted before. Uh, Advanced Kentucky is actually, uh, supported by the Kentucky Science and Technology Corporation, which I have found is, uh, several large businesses and industries in Kentucky support this. Uh, because what they're trying to do is to, uh, educate, uh, a workforce for them that are, uh, efficient and proficient in math, uh, and in technology. So they're investing, which I love, in education, starting in the middle schools to beef up the rigor in your math, science, and English courses. Um, the courses that they are supporting in this include calculus, which we have AP calculus, which we've had for many years. We are, uh, statistics, which we are going to be offering for the first time, AP statistics next year. We don't have a computer science in place, but we are looking at that perhaps, uh, on a three-year plan. Biology, we have AP biology, AP chemistry, AP physics, and AP environmental science, as well as your English language and literature. So those are the specific AP programs, which we have all but, uh, the computer science, um, uh, in place. Now, what they do is that they will train, Advanced Kentucky pays for the training of our AP teachers, uh, if they haven't been to training in the last five years. And that's one thing I can say, that our AP teachers really stay up on their training, so, uh, really, we're going to be training the feeder courses, the teachers that feed those programs. Um, and, uh, and they call that laying the foundation training, and we have never participated in that before. I'm so excited about that because it includes not only AP teachers, but those teachers of math, science, and English down to grade six. So they pay for, for most of that training, and then they actually come in, they have teachers, uh, that have been working in these AP programs that will come in and hold review sessions, um, with our students, as well as our AP teachers several times, uh, you know, beginning, um, and this will be next school year, beginning next January, to prepare them for the AP test. So they provide training for the teachers, they do these review sessions with our students, provide materials. And, um, and they have seen, um, already with, with school districts that have been part of Advanced Kentucky increases, and they just finished this longitudinal study. It's in, it's in the material, so I'm just kind of highlighting what I've given you. Uh, Kentucky has increased one hundred and fifteen percent qualifying scores in all subjects since the inception of Advanced Kentucky. And that was only in two thousand and eight and nine, so you can see, that's a dramatic increase. Qual- and this is what I love, qualifying scores for the minority students increased a hundred and seventy-six percent in all subjects and a hundred and ninety-five percent in math, science only. So what it does, it gives, it lends support for your underrepresented students, and that includes minority and lower socioeconomic, providing training for teachers, support for students. Also, um, they've demon- demonstrated, those students that have been in the Advanced Kentucky program, uh, have demonstrated a one-point-five point increase in their ACT scores and a ten percent advantage in college and career readiness. And then those who go to college persist at higher rates and gra- and, um, graduate in four years at twice the rate of non-Advanced Kentucky. So what it does, in essence, is it lends support to go after the underrepresented students, providing training and support. And, um, we're just super excited about it. We're going to be number eight cohort since the inception of two thousand and eight and nine, we'll be cohort number eight. Um, so it's been gradually rolled out in the state of Kentucky, and they actually paying after us. Because of our already successful program, I think we can make it even more successful, so.
So what, what you're saying, in a nutshell, is that, is that we're increasing the number of students who are actually taking tests?
That's right.
And overall, we're increasing the scores?
That's right. And we're going to increase, we're going to actually start the rigor part in the middle school, which we haven't done. So we're going to have middle school, uh, teachers involved in the program.
How can we not like this?
I mean, I mean, it's just like, wow!
It's a great thing.
It really, it really is, and I've been very impressed, I've been in several meetings, uh, there was a quadrant, uh, with, um, uh, and like, and then Alyssa Clark has been all over this, and we know Alyssa's one of our, uh, one of our lead, well, she's our AP chemistry teacher, and she has been one that has helped to build our AP program, and, um, she's, she is the one that really has been leading the charge in this. And, because she sees the, uh, just the potential there, and we already have the successful program, but we, she really sees where we can take it up a notch, if not two notches.
One question, uh, this has more to do with the, uh, you see that the underrepresented children, uh, minority children, and you speak of the increase of, of that, how does it affect the mainstream?
Well, you're going after more kids in the mainstream, you know, in the past, um, a lot of students, and I just speak from experience, having been an AP teacher and have been a principal with, with an AP program. You have some students that lack the self-confidence to get into AP programs, you know, that really, like minorities and underrepresented.
My question has, has to do with the mainstream students, the ones that aren't classified as minority or underrepresented, how, how does it affect them?
Well, they, they actually work in-
Are their scores, are-
Oh, their scores are increasing too.
Well, I mean, excuse me, that's, that's my question, I mean-
Yeah, oh yeah, yeah, the scores of everyone go up.
We don't hear the percentages of increases that way that we're hearing. And that's great, I mean, there's no, I'm just interested in the difference.
Yeah, well, I've seen-
Everybody's elevated, tied around, as all most of us, but-
Oh yeah, it does.
We don't have any percentages of that.
No, I mean, it's, it's not act- because they really are, they want to see more underrepresented. The corporation wants to see-
Right, so now you're targeted rather than a growth of school, we're looking at. But, I don't, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm glad it's happening, I'm, my interest was, is where, is everyone-
But all, but overall, the scores increase, for, for the main-
Sure, but I mean, that's, and when you add that, I mean, that's easy to raise that one. I just, my question was how the, how to rest?
The other scores will go up too for the mainstream that get in there.
Sure, because everybody's well, but, but, uh, well, my point was, you know, you're, you're giving us percentages on, uh, certain classification children, or students. You know, how about overall? I mean, there's got to be a graphic that says, these, I mean, here, at least they lack, or they all rose.
They all-
But as a, as a general rule, you add more higher scores, their low scores go up at the end of the day. And I'm, you know, I'm actually proud of that, but that was my question, is the other, uh, consideration, measures?
They're trying, I, I, then I would say they go after the underrepresented, but Advanced Kentucky wants to see a general increase of more students taking-
So we, exactly, we're, yeah.
Yeah, everybody, yeah.
That is my question.
And, and they, they do, I mean, you see, uh, we already have a large number of kids that take AP students. But we'll see even larger, not just with underrepresented, we're going to see more of those, but we will see a, a big increase.
I'd be interested to see how that demographic goes, or hesitation.
And it takes, it, you know, it'll take, okay, we'll implement it next year, so we'll have the training. So I would say in year three, so you're looking at fifteen, sixteen, you're looking at eighteen, nineteen, nineteen, twenty, you're going to see a huge jump because you'll have those three years.
Exactly, a huge jump in the underrepresented, and that was my question, I guess, because I'd see how that works out.
I think it's just going to be a big shot in the arm.
Thank you.
Like a B twelve shot.
Anything else, Mrs. Black?
If we, uh, you said we're going to start prepping kids at sixth grade, by the time they're seniors, what are they going to be? What kind of subjects are they going to have to take?
Well, we'll be taking these subjects, but you'll be used to the rigor, you know, it's kind of like you get, starting getting used to rigor with lots of support. You have lots of support in there. That's the one thing that I've been impressed with, some of the strategies that we're talking about with support. Um, like I said, a lot of students lack that self-confidence. So when you start that rigor in preparation for AP programs and you spread it out into all your content, your math, science, and English courses, then they'll be really super ready for the AP courses. You're going to have the same courses that we've had, they're just going to be better prepared. They're just going to be ready.
They're ready.
That, that's going to help explore, plan, ACT, or whatever aspire for the new test that'll be coming out.
I was just going to make a comment, I just said, that they focus on underrepresented and minority students because they need so many more people in the workforce, and they're not-
They're not, that's what it's all about, truly.
And that's why they're reaching out and trying to get them in the workforce to improve their job skills.
Which will help the economy in Kentucky, I mean, you think about overall, I mean-
Well, the challenge should be to all children, regardless of, literally, the challenge should be to all of the children. And not only is Mr. underrepresented or not, it should all be challenged. And that, that is basically my question before, is how the challenge of other children, even though it's targeted in certain groups, just target them all.
Oh yeah.
Let's see what the others show us.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you. I think that, that takes us right into our next item there, Madam Chair, uh, one, uh, as number five, our delivery targets. Uh, this is something where we talk about increasing rigor and, and preparing students. Uh, overall, this is where we'll benefit greatly, not only will we, uh, be, uh, students and folks that are ready for the workforce, college and career ready, uh, but even in our own scores, uh, uh, beginning at the middle school. Uh, Mr. Clark is here today to, to speak with us about, uh, what we're doing in, in the middle school. As you know, in our continuing series, uh, our school's presenting our delivery targets. Um, um, we're working towards everyone, uh, increasing student achievement. And so, uh, Mr. Clark, thank you for being with us today, and I look forward to our student achievement.
So sure, as you say, um, one of the things that I almost spoke up when Carol was talking, uh, and I'll mention this, uh, going in, I'm sure that you mentioned something about, uh, so what about later on? Is, I've had actually some, some experience and exposure in laying the foundations training. It is, uh, amazing training for teachers that teach the content already. So it's, it basically just is increasing the rigor in those classrooms based on the training they receive, and all kids benefit from that, that have that teacher. So the goal is then just to get them confident and, and recruit them to participate in AP courses when they get to high school. So if that helps clarify, I almost spoke up when, when Carol was talking. Um, I, I, I do, I am going to be sharing just a, a few highlights, uh, because there's a lot of great stuff going on at Clarktown Middle School. Um, and I, I chose to, to focus on a few target areas that, uh, I think are receiving a whole lot of effort and emphasis, and we've been really working on this since the beginning of the year. One, and, and you've heard this a lot, uh, that we focus on student data, and we want to make sure that the data we're seeing from students is actually having an impact on what we do and the decisions that we make. Um, I focused on three things, we looked at three main bullets. One is looking at last year's K-Prep, uh, results, uh, then also using the math assessment, measured academic progress assessment that we get three times a year. And then also using that data for PLCs, professional learning communities, to actually develop their improvement goals. And I'll hit on each one of those main bullets, uh, as I share the delivery targets with you today. Um, first, looking at K-Prep, we, we actually have, uh, ramped up our interventions, and we really looked at and targeted students and based on their performance on K-Prep, uh, looking at kids that were performing at the principal's level, and what, what do they need to get to proficient? Uh, where are they, are they a, um, high novice, how do we help get them to apprentice, so on and so on? So we, we looked at and targeted groups of students during our intervention period, and we have, and you can hear me on the morning announcement say, today is a gold day, or today is a purple day. And what that does, it tells kids, and this takes a little bit of training, actually, kids get it really quick. Uh, teachers sometimes struggle with, okay, now what is today? So I watch every announcement. But these gold days and purple days tell kids where to go during that intervention period, and they're receiving math or reading instruction, uh, during that time. We also provide enrichment, uh, courses during that time for students that are, uh, you know, meeting or exceeding, uh, goals based on the K-Prep. Um, but some students are receiving maybe struggling in math, or maybe just struggling in reading, and they actually have, with the particular teacher, reading every day of that week during intervention. Or they may have an opportunity to receive both, uh, reading and math instruction. So it's very targeted, it's very specific to an individual child, where are they, what's the name? Uh, we're real excited about that, and, and, uh, got very creative in scheduling, and it seems to be having a real impact. Of course, we're, we use the, the math assessment, and we give that three times a year, we'll be giving it again in the spring. We give it, since we give, give to school in August, uh, and we set a baseline basis for that given year, uh, and then we give it again in December. I'm going to share some, some data with you in just a minute, looking at, uh, students and their progress, uh, to reaching, um, the expected outcomes that we want. Um, in August to December, of course, we do have a full year that we're looking at, ultimately, when we get the assessment again in the spring. But I have some data for you in just a minute. And then, of course, uh, using the data for PLCs to focus on improvement goals, I'll get to that as well. This first, uh, chart is looking at math, and, um, I wanted to share a quick synopsis of, uh, students and how they're growing. Uh, you might au- automatically be worried about some of the stuff that you see, but I want to tell you, there's actually some encouraging, very encouraging information here. Seventh grade's a little bit lower than you'd like, uh, definitely, but, um, I mentioned that we expect, we have an expected growth for every child based on math. And we're using that as a screener to see how are we doing? So ultimately, the large purple bars are, we want a hundred percent of kids to reach the expected level of growth based on this assessment. Um, at December, at the middle of the year, that's where this, the gold bar comes in, fifty percent are, are at that expected, uh, or we're nearly, we're nearly at that expected, uh, goal. Um, we're not, we would like to be at fifty or higher at the mid-year point for seventh grade, should we see the math, we're, we're down a little bit in seventh. And we're doing extremely well in eighth grade, uh, based on August to December and what we expect as far as student growth. And reading, again, at the mid-year point, I can't stress that enough, you know, uh, this is at the middle, we have a whole lot more instruction after December that we do. So you can see in reading across the board, uh, really, uh, doing, uh, great things, and kids really are moving in a positive direction. Uh, math is definitely one of those areas that we, we spend a lot of time and effort on. Um, and I think it's probably, just your slide. Now for the, the next, uh, area that we use our data, and, and this is something I'm very excited about, and this really ties into, um, all the work that teachers and I engage in. Um, it's, it's all about, uh, making improvement on classroom, um, and working together as a team to make sure that that happens. Our school improvement plan is, is very purposeful, including all PLC goals in our plan. As a result of that, I had, and I shared this with Mr. Hostwall not long ago, I was very excited to hear a veteran teacher share with me. Um, and she shared, this is the most meaningful school improvement, improvement plan I can remember. Every teacher has ownership in this plan, and I paraphrase, basically, what she shared. That was in a site-based meeting, that was for, uh, parents and other teacher representatives to hear, and that definitely is the goal. We want it to be a plan that really has ownership and teachers, every teacher could pick the page or the strategy or the goal, that they absolutely are invested in. Um, so it was a very exciting thing for me to hear. Also, uh, we, we ramped up the goals and what we focused on when I met with teachers in their PLCs. Um, I wanted to know more about specific strategies that they're going to use, instructional strategies that's going to help them move kids. Because it all, we know it comes down to what's happening in the classroom. So we had very, um, targeted and, and actually very meaningful discussions about, well, if they're not moving, you need to be able to know, if students are not improving, you need to be able to know, what instruction am I using, very purposely using, and if it's not working, I need to change. If I don't know exactly what I'm doing in the classroom and I'm unable to find that, um, it just, it just becomes a number, and I've got to be able to make adjustments in the classroom. Uh, so that was, uh, we were very deliberate about that. I'm also excited that each, each content group, each PLC, and every grade level actually comes to each site-based meeting, uh, they take a turn. I think the next one coming up is math, and this is on Thursday. And they talk about, um, their specific goal, there's, and SMART stands for Specific, Measurable, Attainable, Results-oriented, and Timely. There may be different words used for the acronym RASAM, but, uh, that's the general idea. So they share their goal, making sure to meet that criteria of a SMART goal. Uh, then they share a description, or they describe, you know, why did we choose that particular result? So they're getting into data, this is what we know, this is what we saw. Uh, then they give any, uh, progress that they made, and they share that in, in a site-based meeting, and of course, uh, what they're learning while they're monitoring that goal. Now, that's just, that's just one thing that's public that a PLC is doing, um, but I wanted to share that because it has been a very powerful, uh, experience for teachers, for me, as their principal. Uh, and to be able to share that with their colleagues and their parents, um, that's something we started last year, and it's, it's just elevated even a little higher this year, so it's, it's a very meaningful experience. We also certainly have student buy-in and worked toward that. Uh, we started this, uh, initiative last year as well, and it's, uh, we ramped it up this, uh, this year. Student goal setting, we're using the individual learning plans or the ILP, which is required for all students to start in sixth grade. And they are setting goals in their ILP, along with all the other things that, that's required of them in, in their individual learning plan. And then we met with parents, we've done one meeting, we will do another. Uh, and we share with parents, uh, basically the progress of their individual child. We pull up the ILP, get kind of access to that, and they go through the ILP, starting at six all the way through twelfth grade. Actually can send results of the ILP to a college they're applying for. Uh, so it's something that we, we definitely want to invest more in. And I wanted to basically close with an overall, uh, thought that, um, you know, I, I, something, you, you want to know kind of what we're about at the middle school, and, um, and definitely, you know, the, the work and the leadership that me and my team try to provide. Um, teacher leadership is, is such an essential, uh, way of doing work. Um, and, and having teachers become leaders, so, to share a quote with you, um, "Teachers who become leaders experience personal and professional satisfaction, a reduction in isolation and deadlines, all of which spill over into their teaching. As school-based reformers, and those teachers are, these teachers become owners and investors in school rather than mere tenants. They become professionals." So, think back to that quote from that one teacher, twenty-plus-year veteran, about their involvement- about their involvement and ownership in this school improvement plan. And that makes it like a small thing, but she said that over 20 years is the most meaningful it's ever been. So it's work that's happening in teams, it's paying attention to it in school, it's keeping focused on it throughout the year. And I'm very proud of the teachers and think that we're definitely going to improve learning situations for students. Any questions? Just a few things.
I think it's good that you're keeping up with the individual progress of these students.
It's essential, it's essential. It's something, you know, we do, I rely a lot on math and that particular assessment, it is a tremendous tool. So, you know, teachers are very quick to work out, okay, who's in the gold group, who's in the purple group? And how is individual kids scoring and moving on that particular assessment? And so they're looking at, down to the individual. And that individual group's already been targeted based on data to begin with. So there is definitely some very purposeful work.
Clark, one second, before you leave, I'd just refer to you around the dais, Mr. Clark. Frankly, I mean, error in doing so, he has defended his dissertation and we present to you now Dr. Clark. Thank you and congratulations and keep up the great work at Orange County Middle School.
Our next item is the approval to adopt a resolution authorizing the Barstown Independent School District Finance Corporation to issue refunding of our revenue bond.
We're always glad to see Joe Nance because, at least, he's got a perfect record so far since I've been here. Each time he shows up, he's saving us money. So we certainly like seeing Joe Nance.
Well, thank you for that introduction. It is a pleasure to be here and as usual, I always have paper. You know, I guess, I was thinking about probably for at least the last eight years, at the time I come before you, I say we're at near historic lows in interest rates. Well, we are currently at near historic lows in interest rates once again. You know, unfortunately, at some point rates are going to go up. But the good news is they're still low. And we have the opportunity now that we've identified two of your bond issues that we can refinance that will result in a net interest cost savings. And if you'll look at my handout, the three-page handout, this kind of gives you an overview of what we're looking at. And the two issues that we've identified that we can refinance are your 2010, and you'll notice it says BaaS bonds, or Build America bonds. If you recall, during 2009, 2010, as a result of the Federal Stimulus Act, we, most of the bonds we issued in those two years were issued as Build America bonds. And what those bonds were, we actually issued them as a taxable bond, which had a higher interest rate than a taxable bond. However, the federal government rebates to us 35% of the interest cost. So during that period of time in 2009 and 10, that was definitely the best way to issue bonds. Now, the one thing I'll point out about those bonds is, I think probably all of the board members here are aware of a little thing called federal sequestration for the last couple of years. As a result of federal sequestration, the federal government for the last two years has not really been rebating the full 35% interest cost. They've cut that back by about 7% for the last two years. The language was built into the Build America bonds that at any time the federal government did not give all or part of the rebate, the bonds would then be eligible for refinancing immediately, assuming interest rates are low enough, and now they are. Now, so you'll notice, we were paying an average interest rate of 5.18% on the Build America bonds. And on the 2006 bonds, we're paying an average interest rate of 4.15%. And if you look where it says new refunding bonds, we're projecting the new rate on the 2010 series will be 3.15%. And the new rate on the 2006 issue will be 2.45%. So you can see our rates are substantially lower now. And just in general, both of those bond issues were used for improvements at the high school. So we did two small improvement options. So what does this mean to the board? If you flip to the second page. On the 2010 issue, if you look at the far right-hand column, we compare what we're currently paying to what we're projecting our new payments to be. And this is our annual savings per year for the life of the bond. So on the 2010 Build America bonds, we're projecting a net total savings of $62,230 over the life of the bonds. If you flip to the next page, on the 2006 series, again, we compare what we're currently paying to what we're projecting our new rates to be. And you'll see in the far right-hand column, this is our average savings of about $5,000 or $6,000 per year for a total of $70,174. So altogether, what we're projecting is a little over $130,000 of total savings. And what I would like to point out to the board on both of the issues, whenever we do a refinancing, the term of the issue is the same as it was before. So we're not shortening the term of the bond, so we're going to continue the term of the bond. You're going to pay them off just as you were before. The only difference is we're going to issue refunding bonds, pay off the old bonds, and our net payments will be less each year. You might kind of keep in the back of your mind what I'm presenting here today, or what we consider minimal savings. If I could actually sell your bonds tomorrow, I think we're going to save more than that. But by the time the board approves this, we have to advertise, we have to get approval from the Department of Education. It'll be about two weeks before we can actually bid your bonds and lock in the savings. The worst thing that could happen is for some reason, the interest rates went up between now and then and we could not achieve these minimum savings, we just don't do it. We don't know anybody, anything, and we'll just keep paying them like we were. But fully expect that we will be able to achieve these minimum savings. And actually hope to be able to report back to your superintendent that the savings are even greater than the minimum. Any questions? We've done this before, interest rates are low and time's running. So to kind of refresh your memory, since we don't do this every day, what we have before you now as the board is to adopt a resolution authorizing the Barstown Independent School District Finance Corporation to actually issue the bonds. Do you recall, whenever we do a financing, whether it's new money or refinancing, you have to take action as the board. Once the board meeting's over, then we're going to call it, order the finance corporation, which you're also members of, and then we'll adopt the second resolution.
So do we need any kind of approval at this time?
Yes, I have the second handout, which is the two resolutions that we're actually going to be considering. The top resolution is the resolution that needs to be adopted by the board. And it probably would be appropriate for me to read that into the record. It's a resolution of the Board of Education, the Barstown Independent School District, initiating the refinancing process. And have orders refund and retire school building revenue bonds, Series 2006 and 2010, originally issued to finance the projects, confirming the acceptance of an offer of assistance from the School Facilities Construction Commission, authorizing and approving the execution of a contract leasing option of the Barstown Independent School District Finance Corporation, and any further necessary instruments, approving the plan of refinancing said project in general. So we would need a motion and second to adopt the resolution and brief.
I have one question. Are we receiving new reports from the federal government right now?
Yes, what we were-
Seven percent decrease or?
A 7% decrease from the 35%.
Which allows us, how much? Uh, 28% of the interest has been refunded back?
Right, and so what we're showing you on, if you'll turn to the first page, assuming that going forward, even that they give our full rebate, that is the net savings counting including-
Including the full rebate.
Including the full rebate. So when you take off the 7%, it's actually more than what we're showing.
Good question, great point.
Thank you, and I'll come back up for the second meeting.
Our next item is approval of the 2015-16 fee schedule.
And you have in your packet there both 2014, 15, the current year, so you can compare to the 1516. There are a few increases that we have this year. And I'll go through each of these with you, beginning with childcare. Basically, the only difference that you will see between those two is that we've added a weekly rate on the 2015-16 scale, everything else remains the same. Looking under childcare, excuse me, that was an early childhood, a three and four-year-old, two. And now looking at the childcare fee schedule, based on the 2% increase that has been mandated for raises this coming year, which we're certainly thrilled that our employees are getting a raise that they certainly deserve. But in order to be able to fund that properly, those folks in the childcare business will be raising rates slightly, basically 2% of what the current rates are. So if you want to, if you look at the 1516 schedule for childcare, that's a $26 daily rate. We will simply raise that by $1. Looking at the school-aged children, the daily rate at 9.45 is actually an increase of 45 cents. And then the kindergarten through seven is an increase of 95 cents. And then the three and four-year-old, half-day or less, is increased 55 cents. And then the full-day, five hours or more, is increased 95 cents per day. Then if you look at the breakfast and lunch fees, there are some increases there. And I'll go over each of those increases. The cover, the purpose of increasing these lunch prices are simply due to the increase in student prices. We simply are operating at a minimum. We will increase breakfast at 10 cents. Looks like the adult breakfast will remain the same, student breakfast will increase by the 10 cent. The preschool breakfast, excuse me, lunch will increase by 15 cents. Primary K-2 will increase by 10 cents. Grades three through 12, the two, four-year-olds, increased by 5 cents. And adult lunch will increase by 15 cents. So each of these, I just want to assure you, as I shared with you in the board notes, that we agonize over such things, certainly when it comes to our students and food. Particularly in light of, a lot of things are going on in federal, I'll just let you think about that, I haven't talked about it. We're doing everything we can to keep these prices as low as we possibly can. So you can rest assured that we've given that a very careful look. I'd like to answer any questions that you might have on the information. There could be some of that going on and frankly, you know, with us providing the correct three things, that nature, there could be some increases on there that were present.
The next item is an approval for the 2015-15 school calendar.
As we've come forward, I can tell you what Mr. Hood has to deem to you for your consideration. It's something that I have spent months in the works. Just wanted to assure you that he has worked hard, he'll tell you about some of this. But to include a lot of folks in making this proposal for your consideration, you may wish to hear.
Yes, the calendar committee, what we brought together this time was a representative from each school, also a member of the BDA Education Association and a member of the Classified SAA. And myself, who unless there's a tie, normally does not have any vote in the, in the, in the calendar decision at all. So we brought all that group together, we had two face-to-face meetings, during which we put together or proposed three optional calendars, which basically had most of the days were the same. But there were days that we started school at one point, ended at a different point, did some things during the middle, with some four-day holidays, three-day weekends, things like that. So we had three basically that we came up with that we could use. Now, mine new, there are a lot of days that the state already has mandated for us that we can do nothing about. So those are, of course, included in there. So that's really out of discussion because it's already mandated. At that point, we asked each of those members to take the options back to their specific, whether it be their group, their school, have that discussion with their people, and to bring back to the table their recommendation, which went very smoothly. We came back together and what they were, what they did is we came up with the option, with a few changes, we came up with the option that you see before you today. A couple of things of interest. One, the calendar matches very well with the county school system. And start dates, ending dates, things of that nature. I know we have people that have grandchildren, children in both districts. It works when we can make that happen, it works well. This time, it really matches well with their calendar. To give you just a few highlights, I've already done that, you received the handout, it looks something like this. I just want to show you a couple of the, because when you just see the date there, you may wonder, what was that all about? Of course, August the 5th there is opening day for students. I'll go do these quickly and then I'll answer any-
Hang on one second. Board members, you have at your place a calendar, I just want to make sure you realize that that calendar is 1415. We're going to use that for a discussion after a while. But one that you have in your electronic is the one Mr. Hood is referring to.
All right, so there is a lot of color. The first day does not have color on it, August the 5th, it's opening day for students. In September, you have the 7th, that is a holiday, Labor Day. October, the 5th through the 16th is fall break. The 5th through the 9th in blue would be intercession. The 19th is a gold day. Just so you know, the gold days, we were also talking to principals, the CIA group, different ones, on what would be the best timing for those to take place for our students. And that's why you'll see the three gold days placed where they are.
Excuse me one second. Board members, just a reminder that gold days are the three days that we included in the calendar. We took out opening day and two instructional days and created the gold days. And they have directions from the district on when those will be used. The purple days are the four professional development days that the state requires through their own funding. So that's how we came up with gold and purple days.
All right, that would take us to November. 2nd being fourth district KDA. The third is a gold day, which is also an election day that we have to be on. So we tie those together. And 25th, 26th, 27th is Thanksgiving. December, the 21st through the 1st is Christmas break. January the 4th is Gold Day 3. The 18th is Martin Luther King Day. You see no days in February because we get, where the light we've got now, take care of those. We've got March the 11th as a professional development. Also notice there's an M1 there that would be considered as snow makeup day number one. In April, the first two full weeks of April, so the 4th through the 15th as spring break. The 4th through the 8th used as inter- as, uh, spring break, the fourth through the eighth used as intercession, um, May the sixth as a PD day, um, the seventeenth, that's also an election day, uh, that we must be off, you can't have professional development, meaning you can have, uh, adults here, you cannot have students here, um, just, just so you know, I gave you the sixteenth through the third, that's the testing window in green, uh, May the thirtieth is a holiday, and closing day for students on June the third. So as previously mentioned, as we went back and talked to people, and we had, we, we got their approval, what they wanted in the calendar, um, and then we, we've had time since then for any changes, for anyone to come back with us to say, you know, we, after looking at this, we want to do something different, uh, this calendar, um, only has, I say only because of what we're seeing outside right now, it has seven days built in, uh, which is, you know, for us, that's, on, on most cases, that's good, um, just like today, is, we've got days built in the calendar, we will not have to extend ours until we get out past that eighth day, I think that's very important, that we have those built into the calendar for things that are sometimes unforeseen, so. Be glad to answer any question, questions that you might have. Yes, um, the, uh, March, March eleventh, May the sixth, and April, the fourth through the eighth.
Sorry to do that to you, I'm never gonna do that again. Hold him and hand him out there.
This one, this year, probably, it's probably the calendar you're seeing has nine days built in, yes.
Do we have less state testing days?
No, the, the, the state testing window is the last fourteen days of your calendar, uh, of course, we, we won't be here on the thirtieth, and we, we can't test on the seventeenth, so we just put in the, basically those last three weeks are, is the window, we won't use every day in that, in that window, it's just showing you the, what our timeframe would be. We would likely use May eighteenth through the twenty-sixth, something like that for a bit.
It's like a lot of hard work, appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you. So we're asking for approval for the two thousand fifteen-16 school calendar.
All votes in favor say aye, uh, those opposed.
Thank you very much.
Our next item is approval of the student discipline.
Actually, one last question, this is, this is the document that we had to look at every two years, at least every two years, uh, I'm gonna reserve the right to bring it back to you anytime we need to make a specific change. Uh, one of the things I want, want to, uh, let you know is that we, we monitor the, the legislature, and if major changes come out of that, say will affect this document, then I'll bring it back to you soon. Uh, uh, we, we've gone over, uh, really close in the last month or so to make sure that there's nothing in here that we need to get on right now, I want to go through a little bit of, just of, uh, to let you, uh, remind you of what's in here, uh, one of the main things is it has the, the rights, student rights, teacher's rights, parent's rights, and principal's administrative rights, and let you know what, what's, uh, they're expected of them, also their responsibilities for each of those groups are also defined in this document, and then it goes into pupil conduct, uh, in a variety of areas. Uh, this is the document that we tried to distribute widely, the parents, teachers, students, uh, have, uh, access to electronically, uh, but we want to make sure it's out there so everybody knows, uh, what's, the rules are up front. Uh, toward the back of the document, it talks about, uh, general, uh, discipline for, uh, classroom teachers, uh, bus safety and practices, and it also goes over, uh, student conduct when you use email and the internet, and like I said, at this particular moment, there's no changes that need, uh, need to be made, in, in, in our estimation, but I do want to, uh, reserve the right to bring it back to you, if, uh, before that two-year period, if, uh, anything comes up. Yes, sir.
In one, uh, particular paragraph, it's repeated throughout the book, and just, there's a lot of times he's saying that there's semantics, I understand that, but, uh, for example, under policy statement prohibitions to aid, uh, at the bottom of that paragraph, where it says national origin, aid, religion, American status, sexual, it says goodness, vote, perhaps it'd be better to say sexual orientation to the sex.
But, yes, sir.
And then throughout the document in that manner.
Okay.
And I have my own in book, and that's, that's something that maybe it covers more bases.
I got it, okay.
And there was another section under there on the tobacco use. And there's nothing in there regarding, regarding vapors or, uh, the E-smokers or the smokeless.
Well, how about we do this, uh, would you, would you want, uh, get the pleasure of the board, would you want to go ahead and make those changes, and then bring it back next month?
It's just a suggestion, but it's.
Uh, that's, that's, that's fine, but those things are always good to, you know, to be pointed out, and I'd be glad to do that.
When you said sex, did you mean to say gender?
Well, it, it kind of covers, that's just a general statement that, that goes in there, so.
Sexual orientation seems to grip.
Or, or it could be a slash gender.
Yeah, gender, sex, orientation.
Yes, that kind of thing. We can fix that, then, then the E, the E cigarette thing is out there, policy is very vague right now, uh, it kind of lumped it into the theme as tobacco, but it's not, you're right, it's not spelled out in that, but.
Yeah, it has to be spelled out. If it doesn't say it on the front door, then it's not written.
Well, and, and I understand that, and would be glad to, to work on those changes and bring it back next month, if that's.
Appreciate it.
Okay. That, that would be fine.
Our next item is approval of the professional service contracts, anyone can vote.
Yeah, we've got three of those, uh, we want to take a look at, um. These are, uh, three employment contracts, and let me explain, they're, they're per hour for, um, what we're referring to is, is reading interventionist or, or reading specialist, basically, uh, for, uh, one for our, um, primary school, um, elementary school, and this, uh, Ms. Blackman was a third before the middle.
No, sir.
Number four, primary and elementary.
Yes.
We're going to be targeting children, uh, that obviously, uh, as you've, you've seen our presentations on delivery targets, and obviously reading is one of those very important things, uh, due to, uh, uh, some monies, some Title VI money that were, uh, have received, uh, they've not issued this, this money for some time, the Title VI rule, uh, income, uh, low-income, uh, school, it's, it's how it's referred to, um, uh, this money's not been available for some time, we've been very fortunate, uh, that the federal government hasn't released that money, uh, we, uh, are going to be, uh, hiring these folks on per-hour basis, we have schedules worked out for them, uh, they will basically, um, be working, uh, a fifteen, sixteen school year, uh, at the end of that sixteen, uh, uh, in, in May, June, we'll be assessed, probably assessed in all along the way, we'll make a decision, uh, first of all, is the money, uh, still gonna be there, if it is, we'll, we'll continue this process on a contractual basis, uh, if it's still there and we're being successful, uh, do we want to spend it this way, or do we want to spend it a different way, so we'll, we'll, we'll make those decisions, but, uh, the really good news, uh, is that we're going to be able to help children, uh, there, in some cases that are having difficulty with reading, and, and that's certainly an area that we've been working on, and certainly want to, so, um, all three of these are primarily the same, so I would just ask you to approve them as a group.
Is the, is the tier-three reading intervention cut into the RTI exactly?
I would like to make note, um, there's a problem that there is, no kinship there whatsoever.
All votes in favor say aye, uh, those opposed. Our next item is the approval of the Pledge-Aid Healthcare Sponsorship Agreement.
Now, I want to come up just to give you a little background on this, and Mr. Roby will know a lot about this already, uh, the pledge agreement is for an athletic trainer to be at our disposal for twenty hours a week, and the best thing is not to be free, uh, and this, uh, they, the, the trainer will work twenty hours on our campus, and then twenty hours with pledge aid to get there forty hours a week, uh, that, one of the, the priorities for the trainer is to be around and contact sports, soccer, football, those kind of things, she visits a, a, a lot of the other practices, and doesn't necessarily go to every game of the non-contact, but she's around in lots, uh, anytime you, if you're at a basketball game or a football game, and one of our kids is injured, the first person you see out there is this person, and, uh, they, what they've been working with for a couple of years, they just wanted to enter into a, an agreement with us, uh, formally, uh, I've had, the, the high school has, and the athletic department has gone over this agreement, and, uh, everything seems to be in order with them, and, and all the things that they're asking us to do, we can do, uh, fairly easy, without, um, things that will complicate, uh, it's great benefit to us, uh, we're, we're very, very fortunate to have this person, uh, at our disposal, and I think Mr. Roby is within subject in several areas and, and practice, so we would, we would ask that you would, would approve, uh, this agreement.
She was at just about her football practice, just about her football practice, her, uh, skills were needed in one respect or the other, and one thing to do about having, uh, having Shannon there, is that she would, uh, will not approve an athlete to go back into competition until it's, until it's concluded through part, so it protects us, it protects the students, so we win.
It, it's a great benefit to the school system.
Oh, we're right.
All votes in favor say aye, uh, those opposed.
And I'm going into the second one.
All right. Going into the second, which is the approval of the St. Catherine College Memorandum of Agreement.
All right, and at least in time right to do, all right, and essentially, what St. Catherine is asking us to do, is they're starting a program through their health sciences, uh, to train athletic trainers, and what they want to do is, uh, partner up with our trainer on our campus to have them to be out in the field to learn, learn the training, uh, it's just like us having a student teacher, uh, on campus, uh, but this is just a memorandum of understanding, some things that we'll do, help orientate them and train them, those kind of things, and make sure that they're following our policies, uh, but the pledge trainer will be the, the main source of their, their education while they're here, so it looks like another win for us, because, uh, we'll get another body to help, uh, but also be under the care of, of the pledge trainer, so that we're asking for approval of that memorandum of understanding with St. Catherine's College for their athletic trainer, um, for lack of better words, student teacher.
All votes in favor say aye, uh, those opposed.
Thank you.
Uh, our next item is the approval of Nelson County Board of Education Memorandum of Agreement.
You know, the Nelson County School District has asked us to take a look and discuss with them, um, some out-of-district students, and, um, you're well aware of that situation, and we've had, uh, some discussions, um, concerning, uh, how we might approach that, uh, in fact, we've had, uh, in your possession, basically, uh, a plan that we discussed, and that is, uh, how we might end up doing some reduction there, we've been working closely with Nelson County, and I think, uh, concerning the, uh, out-of-district students, and I think, uh, it's, we're both, uh, in agreement very early on that we have, uh, two goals, um, basically that was to help them, uh, increase the number of, of, of students, uh, and also for us to be in a very gradual manner, uh, we, we think we're being able to come to an agreement, and, uh, so, uh, what you're gonna see today is a memorandum of agreement, uh, the details, uh, the finer details will come later in the coming weeks, possibly months, uh, we will work on this, uh, and, and bring back a more detailed contract later on, but essentially, what we're asking you to look at today, board members, and to approve, uh, is a, a span of time and a number of students per year, uh, and, and as I said, uh, you, you had that calendar in your possession for a while, and I think you understand, uh, that, so here's, here's what we're looking at, here's what you're being asked to, uh, approve, um, beginning, um, in two thousand fifteen-16, that number will remain static, uh, zero, and then, uh, from year sixteen seventeen through two thousand twenty-seven, twenty-eight, uh, we will reduce that fifteen students per year, uh, again, those details are exactly how that'll happen, uh, we will be able to iron those out, but today, we're asking for your approval, uh, of, of, of the number of years and the span of time, uh, you'll see there are some, uh, other items on there, uh, minor items that have to do with helping us, uh, I think one of the things, we sort of both tag in on this, we'll do a full utilization of the Head Start program, uh, and it's important that the Head Start folks receive the students that they're supposed to receive, uh, we place that in this and, uh, as, you know, as a process in order to help them, uh, get the students to be enrolled in there, uh, and, um, uh, I think the Head Start, um, program itself has taken some, uh, difficult lumps, uh, with some federal cuts, uh, transportation, for example, it's getting harder and harder for them to receive the students that they're, they're supposed to receive, so this gives us an opportunity to help them out. Uh, we, um, overall, we'll be reducing a hundred and eighty students, uh, in that, uh, thirteen-year span, so, as I said, I know there may be other questions that we have that have not been answered to the point, uh, those answers, as I said, will likely be coming in, coming weeks and, and months, and, uh, we'll continue to work closely with Nelson County and, uh, get, and get, get, uh, the details ironed out and bring them back to you, board, and, uh, the final approval of the contract.
Is there a motion? To approve this, uh, Nelson County Board of Education Memorandum of Agreement. All votes in favor say aye, uh, those opposed. Those oppose. And now we're ready to approve of the two thousand fifteen, sixteen non-resident contract.
Who'd have come forward and help us with the approval on this?
All right, this is an agreement that we have each year. We have this form. Basically, all the schools on there are the same, except there's one Barstown City School students that go to other school districts, that's Barron County. I always explain to you that's the virtual high school, that kids can take online. So we don't have anyone driving to Barron County each day for school. The other is on the ones coming to Barstown City Schools. Spencer County is listed on there, that is an employee, which a lot of these could be, but employees coming over. We currently do not have any students going to Spencer County. So what this is, is an agreement that allows the money, the ADA funding, to go with the student. So they come here, the money follows them. We've been doing this for some time. We currently keep this on file. We do not send this to the State Department any longer, so this is really for our records. But Katie, he does ask for approval of those.
Motion to approve.
Do you have a motion for proof? The numbers for the contract. Is there a second?
Second.
There is a second? There is none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose. Thank you. Our next item is the approval of travel authorization for some kind of student.
Why? We've got three of these that we're presenting to you today. And just a second here. First is the Y Club. Everything seems to be in good order there. I think they have everything lined out, that's on March eighth. And it is an overnight trip, and it's why this is being presented to you. The other is a P Club trip. And it is also an overnight trip. And a number of chaplains and everything is in good order there. So what I'd like to do, Madam Chair, is to pull up these two items and present those to you for approval and then come back to the third one. There is a... April teen is making a trip. And just to keep this clean and clear, it might be a good idea for you to approve those, that you're going to consider those for approval, and then we'll come back to the third one.
Okay, we need approval for the Y Club and the P Club. Some more. No further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose. And we're moving on to the big part.
Yes, if you will. Okay, this document, the calendar of two thousand fourteen, fifteen. And let's just take a quick look here. This one has become a little bit problematic, but we may be able to work through it. Some other nature will cooperate with us. Just there's a bit of a problem here that popped up yesterday on my desk. It fell on us yesterday. It may make this one a little more difficult. Looking at the makeup days, we missed one day on February the thirteenth. We made that one up on February the thirteenth. And then, of course, the sixteenth was supposed to be a makeup day. We didn't have any days to make up, so we were out anyway, we missed that day. Obviously, we're out today. So depending upon what happens on the eighteenth, nineteenth, and twentieth, it might end up affecting this trip. Because the next makeup days would be on March the thirteenth would be one of those. And then you would have the... Then you would have the May first day, which would be the oath day, I think. You see that day, that could actually be a makeup day. So that would be two, and again, it depends on how many we miss. Then we come back to the first day of spring break, and that would be March thirtieth, so that would be day three. And then the thirty-first would be day four. Coach Cogurt is planning on making this trip on March the thirty-first. So if we missed the fourth day, then it would be a problem. So here's one way we can handle this. You could approve this contingent upon us not missing that fourth day if we do, then it would not be approved. And we can write it in the notes and such.
Problem is just for tomorrow.
Jennifer? Jim, don't repeat us on this, okay? We're looking at that, it looks slim right now, obviously. I mean, I think it goes without saying. It's pretty tough out there. Again, don't report that we're out tomorrow again. Give us a little more time, we'll be in touch with you.
Now, if you want to land the note for the... For section ten, uh...
Yes. It's nowadays. Essentially, if you missed, you know, the fourth day, then it was kind of tough. So that's just... That's your way of...
Okay. If you found this a fourth day, we will approve the baseball team's trip.
Motion to approve.
Second. We have a second. All votes in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose. Our next item is personnel, we have some reservations.
Yeah, everything's in good order there. We have... Lisa Hall has submitted her resignation. She was a childcare assistant. Just make you aware of that particular item.
The next is we approve a leave of absence request.
We do have five of these folks making a leave of absence request. We have four of them to do analysis and things of that nature and one returning.
So...
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose. Okay, you'll see that we had the side base decision making council minutes. And of course, our next item will be return, but we need to...
Motion to approve.
Question to the chairman.
Yes, for second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Back here. Okay, so now we're ready to take action as the finance corporation. And we only lead as the finance corporation when we're still in office. First of all, what I always do as the finance corporation is to confirm our officers. And basically, your officers of the board, all the officers of the finance corporation, except the titles are a little bit... Board Chairman is the president, Vice Chairman is the vice president, the Board Treasurer is the finance corporation treasurer, and the Board Secretary is the finance corporation secretary. So if that is acceptable, we would just need a motion of second to the board officers.
Need a motion for the officers. Second.
Motion in second for confirmation of... Any more questions? And then we'll go to the next. Oppose. The next is a consideration of the adoption of the reservation authorization of issues of refunding bonds.
And that's the handout that I had given you earlier. So we authorize the finance corporation as the board orders. Now, this is the actual resolution to issue the refunding bonds. And Madam President, I guess it would be appropriate that I read this into the record. The resolution of the board of directors of the Barstown Independent School District Finance Corporation relating to providing for the issuance of one billion two hundred and forty-five thousand principal amount subject to a permanent adjustment of one hundred and twenty-five thousand school building refunding revenue bonds, series two thousand fifteen A, and two million one hundred thousand principal amount subject to a permanent adjustment of two hundred and ten thousand school building refunding revenue bonds, series of two thousand fifteen B, the refunding bonds. In accordance with sections fifty-eight point one eight oh and one sixty-two point one two oh through one sixty-two point two nine oh and one sixty-two point three eighty-five of the Kentucky revised statutes for the purpose of refunding ad or prior to their respective maturities the outstanding Barstown Independent School District Finance Corporation school building revenue bonds, series of two thousand six dated August first, two thousand six, and Barstown Independent School District Finance Corporation school building revenue bonds, series of two thousand ten, Delta America bonds, dated August first, two thousand ten, the prior issues. Through the deposit of an investment in the escrow fund of the net proceeds of the refunding bonds provided for the payment of principal of an interest on said prior issues as same mature or by redemption in advance of maturity, providing for the creation of certain funds to effect the appeasement of the rights of the registered owners of the bonds of the prior issue and the transfer of certain amounts into certain funds providing for the payment of said refunding bonds and interest thereon, providing for the rights of the registered owners of said refunding bonds and enforcement thereof, and providing for an advertised public competitive sale on said refunding bonds. Don't ask me to read that.
Okay, so...
We've only got one question, appeasement. What does that...
You pay off the old bond, you appease the bonds, so that is type of officer. Obviously, we have bond attorneys involved in the language space.
Make a motion to approve.
Okay, we've got a motion to approve, is there a second?
I'm sorry. I'm not pushing that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those oppose.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you. Look forward to seeing you again, sir.
Yes, I'll be back.
So we need this to... The journalism meeting, is there a motion to approve?
I'd love to do that.